Dr. Kylie Rendon. Okay, good, yeah.
Motion to begin?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for everyone being here tonight. Before I hand this over to our superintendent, I would just like to say a big welcome to everyone. And a big thank you to Dr. Kylie Rendon for setting up our live stream once again when it was needed. Thank you for changing the format to make it easier for our community to all participate and listen in. This week, just two highlights that I would like to mention. We had three of our hockey players participate in the All-Star Game at the UBS Arena, including Coach Madrano. So that was quite an honor for our students, as well as our 7th graders with their social studies projects at the middle school. I'd like to thank the staff and the students for all of their hard work. I applaud their efforts. The projects were amazing, amazing as usual. Okay, now I will hand this meeting over to our superintendent. Dr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mrs. Conway. I just would again like to just share with the public that we are remote tonight because we have, once again unfortunately, several members among us who are ill or who were unable to participate in person. We hope to be all well and back in person in our next meeting. As you may have heard tonight, the Second Appellate Court issued a stay in Nassau County's decision on the mask mandate that was issued yesterday. This was the stay that we were expecting to come today. As soon as I go home tonight, I will send something out to families. But the effect of the stay is that the state mask mandate is back in effect and we are required to uphold that. All districts in the state are required to uphold that. That was a big reason we didn't want to flip-flop today because we expected the stay was coming and that for students, keeping that consistency was better. I would also like to add though, to be clear, that once this matter is finally decided and the stay is, for as long as it takes them to make a final decision, we will follow the directive of the court, whether that is to retain the mandate or to invalidate it. The reason we did not do so today is that we knew that this was coming and that we wanted to do what was best for our students. That being said, and again, I will send that out to families tonight when I go home. Tonight, we start off with our student showcase and I'd asked Dr. Kylie Rendon to queue up the video on technology innovation.
Well, my favorite part is that you get to add pictures in the background of whatever choice you want. And I think that's really cool because it seems like you're in like a different habitat, but you're really just in a building.
And this is why I love Gizmos. You actually get to see the electrons in action, they're in motion. And look how they're moving in the electric cloud around the nucleus.
The Gizmos are easier to learn with because when you use a Gizmo, it gives fun, interactive way of learning things without a textbook. A textbook for some people could be uninteresting. So when you give Gizmos, you put Gizmos into the program, it's very good of learning in an easier way. For me, Gizmos help me learn things quicker and pick it up really quick.
I love this club because it's really just fun. I get to hang around with, hang out with my friends. We get to build the robots that we get to see compete in tournaments like this. We get to watch these games and learn and experience and also see what other clubs and other schools are doing. So basically, this is going to be, like at the end of the day, it's going to be a robot that will be able to intake elements and balls and to shoot and to hang on a bar, as well as collect pieces in the tournament. So we can bring to our base. And that's the whole, pretty much the gist of the robot so far.
Thank you so much, Dr. Kylie Rendon. That was wonderful. And wonderful to see how excited our students are about all of these innovative approaches and technology. They're doing things that I have no idea how to do. So that's pretty good, I think. Although there are a lot of things I don't know how to do. Tonight, we consider, continue our our budget presentations. And so I turn it over to Mr. DeVito.
You're muted. Okay.
I mean, I'm going to start. Talk about support functions. Can everybody hear me okay now? Okay, hope so. Which is the A1000 series. We're also going to talk about staff benefits going down to the very end of the budget, which is the A9000 series and included in that 9000 series of debt service, which is 9711 and 9789. So the first actual function that we're going to talk about is the Board of Education, which is A1010. The way we've organized this presentation, and it's similar to how we organized the last presentation, the earlier meeting in January, is we're talking about the functions within the budget. So those are the areas of the budget. Within each function, for the most part, we'll have four different objects or specific areas. Salaries, equipment, vendor services and supplies. And I will always note, when we talk about a specific function, what is driving, whether it's a significant increase or a significant decrease. Now, as board members, as you know, in a couple of months, we'll have finished the budget and we'll give you a copy of the line-by-line budget. It hasn't been completed yet, but this is a way that we can start talking about the different areas of the budget so that the board members and the public have a general sense of what's happening in terms of next year's spending plan. What's driving, whether it's an increase or a decrease, without having to go through every line item of the actual budget. If the budget's, you know, very small print, about 50 pages, and it would take a very long time to go through every specific line item in the budget. So it's a way of summarizing the different areas, a way of really just highlighting some of the main drivers and a way of really engaging new board members in a way that is meaningful. So let's go on to the next slide and talk about what's happening in the Board of Education. So you see here, we're decreasing this function due to the decision to forego a board agenda program that we had talked about doing. So we had the funding in the current year budget for a program that we decided maybe is not really the direction where we want to go. So we took that funding out. It's out for next year. So you'll see a savings at the end of this year because we didn't go forward with the purchase. And so we're moving the funding for next year. District clerk, nothing significant there in terms of the increase based on salary increases, contractual salary increases. And then in terms of the district meeting function, A1060 is a result of our decision to reduce the number of polling locations. It's not a large sum of money, but it is a savings. And so we're representing that in the next year's spending plan. I'd now like to talk about some of the A, and then you see A133, whether it's A1310, A1320, 1325, 1345, having to do with the different related business office functions. The first is the business office, then the auditors, the treasurer and the purchasing. And the treasurer, again, even though it says treasurer and it's a person, it's really the function. So any equipment, supplies, salaries or vendor services that are used to perform that function. So let's go into the detail. The business office, we're projecting a 10.27% increase and that's based on a couple of different factors. First is we budget when we know some of our staff members are going to be retiring and they're entitled to contractual separation pay and some of them are entitled to a retirement incentive. We have an idea who is likely to retire based on their years of service, their age, and sometimes they give us an indication of when they're willing to retire. We had a couple of retirements this past year. We don't really foresee any retirements in the business office next year, but it is possible that we'll have a retirement in the treasurer function. So we shifted that funding that was allocated for separation pay and for the retirement incentive from the business office function to the treasurer function. And that's why you see some of the money shifting from A1310 to A1325. In addition, when we have a retirement, whether it's in a school and it's an instructional staff member or a non-instructional staff member, like in the business office, we are usually able to replace the retiring staff member with a lower cost replacement. Because as our staff go and make their way through the system, they're usually able to earn more. And when we start somebody and we usually start them at the beginning of their career, they start a little bit at a lower salary. So we'll always achieve some savings there. And that's why you see that, you know, rather large decrease in the business office function. And then the corresponding increase in purchase, in the treasurer, as I explained, and then the purchasing. We did do a staff change. So we had somebody leave unexpectedly in the middle of this year. And the person that we replaced, that staff member with, who we expect to be in the role next year just earns a higher salary. And that's an important component of that function. And that's why that happens sometimes. Just the various staff members who are in a certain area have a different salary level. Okay, so we can move to the next area. And that's legal, human resources, records management and public information. And you see here, we've just left the A133 series of codes. And now we're going into the A144 series. And let's start with legal. You see A1420, our proposed budget is relatively the same for the overall function. But what's embedded in that is as a shift within some of the different line items, the retainer costs that we're projecting for next year are a little bit higher to correspond to what our retainer costs are for this year. But we're also expecting a little bit of a lower hourly fee or what's in a different code. Those not covered by the retainer. And we think that, for the most part, it's going to be on balance, it's going to be just a shift from one area to another. And that's why you see a relatively small increase there. That function is basically level. The increase in human resources is really just a function of contractual salary increases. Nothing significant there in terms of additional equipment or any additional vendor services. And the increase in the public information, A1480, is we had a postage credit, right? So we spent, you know, a significant amount of money for a district, you know, typical with other districts on postage. And we had a credit for what we didn't use prior years related to COVID. And so now that we've exhausted that credit, we had to bring it out lineup to its typical baseline. And let's now move on to some other areas within that 1000 series, which, you know, I usually call general support functions. And we have central printing, insurance, association dues. Those are dues of district-wide, district nature, not a particular department, but of a district nature. Judgments of claims, which you see here, we're going to be eliminating the allocation there. And then BOCs in the sense of what we have to pay for their, for their buildings, you know, like just some administrative costs that are not related to an instructional function. Just some general BOCs administrative fees. So let's just focus on some of the big changes here in these series of five functions. For insurance, the standard 5% increase in property and liability that we typically see with our insurance carrier. And as I mentioned in last year's budget presentation, we do have to absorb large premium increases for flood insurance. It's important that we have it, we're required to have it. And we really don't have a lot of control over that. And it does go up a relatively large amount in terms of percentage each year of the past several years. The funding that we eliminated in 1930 in judgments and claims is that we had a placeholder in there for a while. It used to be a higher amount and we gradually reduced it. There was some talk, you know, over the years about whether or not the districts would have to absorb any tax or sorority liability. That's really what that function is used for. And since it doesn't seem like the district in the near future anyway is going to have to absorb any of those costs relating to tax or sorority, I would recommend that we eliminate the allocation there. That's why that's a issue. Okay, now I'd like to leave that first section of our budget, the 1000 series of the general support functions, and now move to the last series of benefits. And the first one is employee retirement, employees' retirement system and that we normally call ERS. And that's an important benefit for our non-instructional staff members. It's their pension system. And you see here a significant reduction, right, of about $570,000, which is quite large. A 25.97% reduction based on what our budget is for the current year. And why is that? Because the employer contribution rate, which is a rate that districts have to pay into the pension system, and that comes from the pension system. They tell us how much we have to contribute is going down in all five tiers. We do not have any more tier one staff members, all right? Now we have tier two, tier six, five tiers. And the biggest drivers of that decrease is, as you see here, a rate decrease from 18.3% to 13.10 in tier four, which represents the largest share of our employees in ERS system. And then you see the relative decreases for tier five and tier six. Teachers' retirement system. We usually call that TRS, another important benefit that our staff enjoy and what the district contributes to those instructional or certificate, certificated staff members. You see an increase of about 6.68%. And that's based on the rate, which in the current year is a 9.8% that they're projecting to go to 10.25. Now, it's not definite yet. We haven't received that information. But that's what they're recommending. They're saying anywhere between 10 and 10.5. So I chose the number in the middle as a good estimate for where we'll need to be for next year. And as you see, we're lucky in the sense that although there's an increase in what we need to contribute for TRS, 380,000, it's less than the amount for ERS. So on balance, we're going to be saving money for next year between the two pension systems, ERS and TRS. Even though TRS is going up, ERS is coming down at a larger level, which is good news for the district. We get to save a little bit money on those two benefits. Next is Social Security and Medicare, A9030, 800, 801, what you see here. And what's interesting is it's a function of our salaries. So overall, we did, excuse me, a projection of what our overall base salaries are going to be and about 1.8%. And therefore, we have an increase in what we pay to Social Security and what we pay out to Medicare based on that increase in salaries. I'd like to talk a little bit about workers' compensation, unemployment insurance and disability. You see these other functions, right, A9040, A9050, A9055. Each of these areas has a different function, a different number. And all of these codes, as I stated previously, come from the state. Not too much different in terms of between the current year and next year. The levels here are going to remain basically the same. We haven't received specific information about rate increases. We have a little bit of a margin in there for a small rate increase. You see, we've just rounded it. So as long as there's not a major increase, if we don't think there to be, we should have funding at an appropriate level for next year as well. Next area is health insurance, which is a large cost area for us in the district, A9060. And you see here, we are expecting our health insurance premiums overall, the district obligation to go up by about $1 million, which is about a 6.35%. Why? You see here that this past January, that those who are covered through individual coverage, the increase was 11.28% for family coverage, 12.07%. And we really haven't seen that type of increase, these double-digit increases since 2016, '17. What's helped us, the overall, every category has not gone up by that amount. We had two other premium categories that basically stayed the same, which has helped. And then another category that went down slightly. But since so many of our insured, of those people who we insure in the individual and family category, it is a driver for the increase that you see about $1 million. And that's why when we budget, we don't know what next January's rate increase or decrease is going to be. That's always an unknown category for us. And I try to budget about 10% because we have seen it go up 10%. And here you see here, from the individual and the family coverage categories, it's gone up 11%, 12%. Not in every category. We have never seen that where it's gone up in every category, but we do have years like we've had this past January where it has gone up that much. So in order to be conservative, to make sure we have enough funding in that category, that's why we do budget for that second half of the year that we don't know yet, next year between January and June, why we have a projection of maybe 10% that the rate may go up again. And that's make sure that we have enough money for next year. Okay, other health benefits that we cover in that code. We, for those staff members who waive, we reimburse them because it then saves the district money for not covering them their premium. For those that are part of Medicare Part B, they get a reimbursement. Dental insurance, the Employee Assistance Program, major medical and life insurance. All of those other related health benefits are about 20% of our code. The total cost for all of the health benefits is about 20.7 million. Other benefits that we also offer, A9089, flexible benefits. We have an administration fee, the annuity that we pay for for those who participate in the 403B. Very small in terms of the overall budget, but I did want to mention it just as a way of explaining all of the benefits that we provide to our staff members. Here, the total cost for these three categories, these within function 9089 is only $83,000. You know, very different from the 20 million in the other category. The last category I'd like to talk about this evening is debt service. And now we're in A9711 and A9789, at the very end of the budget. You see here, it's broken out into principal and interest, our serial bonds. That's the debt service that relates to the school preservation plan from what we borrowed, you know, over 10 years ago. And then the other debt principal and interest relates to our energy performance contract. You see here, when you look at A9711, 600 versus 700, principal versus interest, typical in terms of you're paying more principal as the debt service wears on and you're paying less interest. And that's what that shows. Overall, there's a net benefit to the district because as we finish repaying this debt service for the school preservation plan, slightly less each year in terms of the overall amount. Not too much. The big driver here is the refinancing that we just did back in December when we refinanced our energy performance contract and we were able to save about 60,000 to 80,000 a year based on saving on interest because we refinanced that. And you see that savings here. So overall, you see a decrease in our debt service for next year of just about $140,000. And that is also really is helpful to our overall bottom line budget. That's everything for this evening. I am now happy to take comments and questions from the board members first, please.
Thank you, Michael, for your thorough presentation or discussion. Mr. Pinto?
Ms. Conway, can you hear me? Michael, thanks again for the great presentation as always. I just want to thank you for the work on that and also clarifying the questions I had in the past about our pension costs and the modifications in the rates. But everything else looks great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Verona?
Thank you, Mr. DeVito, for your wonderful presentation. Thank you also to Dr. Kylie Rendon on the technology. It's, I also don't know how to do any of those things those kids are doing, but it's very exciting to watch them do it. I just have a couple of really quick questions. I guess this was my assumption at the time that we decreased the number of our polling places, but I thought it was going to be a more significant savings than that. I think we closed two polling places, right? So, so I guess what we're doing is really putting more election districts in less spaces. Is that how it goes? So really, the employees involved are pretty much the same? Is that?
Well, well, we're definitely reducing polling places and we're enlarging existing election districts. So the Lindell polling place will now encompass everything at the West End, all the way to what used to be 225 Park. And we're also eliminating the Point Lookout polling place and they'll move over to the middle school. I believe we can save a couple of employees in terms of the poll workers, right? So there's some savings there. And we should also be able to save maybe two machines. And that's, and the district clerk can freely chime in if I'm missing anything. But I believe it's in those two line items. It's the stipends that we pay to our poll workers and a slight reduction in the polling machines.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. I loved your explanation when I, when I looked at the presentation. I didn't understand your explanation about the business office and the treasurer and the separation payments. So just so I'm clear, that 74,000 and change that was added into the treasurer's district is part of the $112,000 decrease in the business office, right? So we're not
Yeah, we shifted it.
We're just shifting it. Okay, great. And I asked this once before, a few months ago, but I just need to confirm it. In association dues, I need to confirm that we are not a member of the National School Boards Association.
I think Ms. Dolan was having trouble logging on, but we are not.
We are not. Okay, great. Now, my last question is, the ultimate question is, why would ERS go down and TRS go up? It would seem to me that they would use the same formula to determine an employer contribution, but obviously, that's not the case.
It's a great question. I think they're two different pension systems. We know that they usually invest a lot of their pension funds in the market. And to some degree, there's a lag, right? We saw that after the downturn in the economy, I guess it was 2011, how, you know, we were still enjoying some low pension contribution rates and then it kicked in and then it skyrocketed. But they're two different systems. The money's invested differently. And, you know, it's a small increase in TRS, so it's not a huge increase. But again, why it didn't go down, it's a different system and they're managed.
Regardless of what you're investing in, the market seems to be like going pretty good. Okay, great. All right, thank you again. It was a very clear and short presentation. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other trustees? Okay, I just have one or two comments. First of all, Dr. Kylie Rendon, thank you so much for that presentation. You know, whenever we see the children motivated and wanting to learn and learning in so many fun ways, it's really enlightening to us because we know how hard you are all working to make sure that our students are getting the best education possible. And it's, you know, years away from years ago when you really saw technology in the classroom being used in formats like the robotics or hearing students so excited about robotics or learning about the nucleus. So we'd like to thank you for all of your efforts in that. Michael, I just have a quick question about, our flood insurance went up 25%. Is, how come so much?
That's, that's the That's, that's the premium. Uh, if you take a look at last year's presentation, it was similar. And we've been seeing that it's not just a one-year spike. Um, it, 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 there are large increases. And I think it has to do with just all the natural disasters that we have across the country. And the coverage that is being used, that they need to, to, to raise the, the premiums, you know? We don't have a lot of flexibility there because, you know, we do have this obligation to maintain a certain level of flood insurance based on where we are and based on, you know, the disaster that we experienced in Superstorm Sandy. But we, we have even received certain waivers, um, from the National Flood Insurance Program where we don't even have to have it at, at a level that some air, other areas do. So we've already received a certain waiver, um, so that we could maintain, it's this whole obtained, maintain, maintain what they deem is an appropriate level, but, um, it's, we're, we're already like achieving a savings here. Um, because usually what they say is supposed to have the kind of coverage that, you know, if we had thirty-five million dollars of loss again, and, and we just said that's, you know, that's exorbitant. This was a couple of years ago when we went back and forth with the flood insurance people and we got this really important waiver so that we could have overall a lower level, still be covered and still have the benefit of FEMA if anything happens to our community again. Uh, but it's still, it's, it's still, you know, increasing at a large amount.
Yeah, it's an exorbitant amount. And I know we just, you just did a lot of work on the bulkheads as well, right? And we are putting things in place to help ourselves.
Yeah, mitigation efforts that we're required to do and that we think is important to do. But, um, and that helps in terms of doing our part in terms of, um, like we were supposed to mitigate and we have. But the, the rate increases, we don't have control over.
No, I know. And, and with the health insurance, do you think the health insurance is going to jump up like that again next year? Do you think, I know I'm asking you to project because, but we haven't had such a, a, a significant increase in the health insurance in six years.
Yeah, the only thing I can think about, Mrs. Conway, is that maybe it's COVID-related? You know, that we are in a health crisis right now and, you know, we are spending a lot of money on, um, healthcare costs. So I would have to say that it's, uh, COVID-related, just as, just my sense, but, you know.
All right. Well, well, thank you again for your very detailed presentation.
You're welcome.
DeVito, and I know that we're going to be working on the budget for the next, next few months to come. So we appreciate all, all of your hard work.
You're welcome.
Could I ask one more question? What is next, uh, next meeting's budget presentation on?
Elementary program.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay.
All right. Questions and comments from the public, I believe, uh, Dr. Gallagher?
Yes, um, actually, uh, Mrs. Conway, I don't think there are any comments and questions on the budget presentation. So I'll do, I'll address all the comments and questions at the end.
Okay, thank you. Um, Long Beach Classroom Teachers Association?
Mrs. Conway, I think, um, did you want to ask about new and old?
Oh, thank you. Um, new and old business from the board? Okay. Ms. Verona, are you good? No new and old business? Okay. All right, now for the Long Beach Classroom Teachers Association. Any announcements?
No announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. It's always great to see you at our meeting, so thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you to Mr. DeVito for the comprehensive presentation.
Um, administrative, supervisory and PPS?
Yes.
No announcements. Thank you.
LBCA, Long Beach Schools Employees Association?
I don't see anyone on here, um, but can I just jump back because actually I do want to do the second, um, public comment? Um, and then we can, I think we're finished with all of the groups anyway. Um, so these were the comments that we received, um, through the, um, through the portal. First one is from Danielle Carr, Ten Fifth Avenue, Point Lookout. First, thank you for the clearance with communication around the continuation of mask mandates in our school. We've spent the better of two years discussing masks while we know they work. These masks are keeping our kids in school, but not only curbing spread, but limiting the need to quarantine and go to remote based on exposure. Which brings me to my first question. If the mask mandate is removed at the state level with the Long Beach School Board vote as they did before school starts to continue the mandates until numbers shift down? Um, I did address that in the beginning of the meeting and I believe that we would follow the state mandate at this point. Um, while I do not believe that this is a question that should lie on your shoulders, I do know that you voted for a mask mandate prior to the school year when numbers were significantly lower and variants were less contagious and not affecting children. Second question, if we shift to mask optional, can uh, the district detail how that will affect the day-to-day in-school experience based on regulations and how our quarantine and close contact process will shift? Well, that's an interesting question. Um, and, and according to the Nassau County Department of Health today, which we posed that question to, we would have to quarantine many more students, um, if, if we're not masked. The quarantine rules have not changed for schools. If it's three feet and masked, we do not have to quarantine. If we were to remove the masks or the state were to remove the masks, we would. Um, any other, just, uh, any other shifts towards, um, other systems or protocols? We would have to address that, um, depending on where we are when the state does make a final determination about lifting a mask mandate. Uh, I think all of our hope is that we're in, at that point, a much better place numbers-wise and we won't have to put any additional protocols in place. Thanks in advance for this and thanks for tackling these issues over the past two years. It's certainly not what we all expect to deal with when it comes to schools and education. Second comment is from Dr. Ellen Wywell, Market Street, Long Beach. To Dr. Gallagher and the Long Beach Board of Education, I'm an infectious disease epidemiologist and the parent of a Long Beach Elementary School child. I urge you to continue requiring face masks in our schools. It was helpful to hear last night about this. We are in the midst of the biggest wave of COVID that we've had, the one driven by the Omicron variant. Even though the number of new diagnoses of COVID is thankfully dropping fast, our county still has about as many new cases each day as we did during the worst of last winter surge and two to three times as many daily cases as during the worst of the outbreaks from the Delta variant this past fall. Our district began requiring masks when cases were much lower and the variant circling then was much less contagious than now. This is not the time to make masks optional. The daughter that my school attends had four, my, the school that my daughter attends had four COVID cases reported yesterday and today. And there may be other cases that are not being detected or reported. There would be even more spread of COVID between people in our schools if masks were not in use or were optional, which would decrease instruction time, negatively affect mental health and create childcare demands. Do the schools and health department consider mask usage when determining close contact and quarantine guidance? And how would that be affected if masks became optional, which I just addressed? We should all do what we can to keep our kids in school with their friends and teachers as safely as possible. Face masks, which scientists have found to reduce COVID dis- uh, transmission are a critical tool during this time. Please continue to uphold the requirement for masks in our schools. Thank you, Dr. Ellen Wywell. The next one is from Stacy Russo, East Olive Street, Long Beach. Thank you for supporting the mask mandate. I'm not sure whether this is considered a controversial issue when keeping, it's keeping children safe and in school. If the mandate were to be lifted, how would it change quarantines if there are positive cases in a class and possibly school closures? Again, which I addressed. Um, this one is from Renee Turzey, Franklin Boulevard, Long Beach. I would like to thank you for not acquiescing to the disingenuous politicians and misguided parents screaming about parental freedom and continuing to uphold the mask mandate. Our positivity rate is at ten percent, which is still extremely high and masks are enabling our schools to remain open. If this common sense public health measure is rescinded prematurely, I fear the health and well-being of our children, especially those under five, um, who are ineligible for vaccination. While I'm well aware we have reached the peak of this surge and now are coming to the other side of it, we still need to protect our vulnerable students and staff. This will not be forever, but I feel if we just hold on a little longer, we'll be in a better position to eventually lift this mandate safely. It's disheartening to see how children are being used as pawns by politicians in order to push an agenda and rile their base who are nothing but a loud misguided minority. Our children need consistency and more importantly, protection. I strongly implore the board to continue the mask mandate until our positivity rate is at or below one percent and/or children under five are eligible for vaccination. If the board decides not to protect our vulnerable staff and children, what then will be the policy regarding positive cases and quarantine? Again, I, I address that. Will a remote option be offered for those parents who choose not to play Russian roulette with their vulnerable children? Um, and again, you know, we're hoping that at the point when the mask mandate is lifted, we're at a safer level and won't have to do that. This is from Lorna Kaplan Warner for Klein Avenue, East Atlantic Beach. The children with disabilities in this district are guaranteed legally an education that does not put them at risk due to their disabilities. This includes children's health conditions. I implore you to continue the mask mandate during this ongoing pandemic that isn't over just because some people would like it to be in order to continue to serve the most vulnerable members of your community. ADA guarantees my child a public education that does not penalize him for having a medical condition. Therefore, the mask must stay. This is from Jennifer All, Twenty-Five Barnes Street, Long Beach. Just wanted to thank you for continuing to protect our children by enforcing the mask mandates. My children come home daily to a baby who is ineligible to be vaccinated and is too young to properly wear a mask. You've made the safest and most scientifically sound decision for our community. Please continue to follow science and stay strong in the faces of the loud and misinformed. Additionally, I truly hope you're working on fixing the air quality at your school. Even without COVID concerns, the building is nearly, nearly a hundred years old and major updates need to be made. It was hard to hear a board member claiming that fixing East wouldn't be fair to the other schools. Are the children bees less important to this community? The children there deserve clean air. Whether or not the updates would make East more attractive to future students, the students who are there now deserve these updates. And just to clarify that, um, the, the conversation was about air conditioning, not about air quality. Um, and, you know, we did extensive, it is certainly hot at ease, no denying. But we did extensive air quality testing last summer before we reopen um, and had independent environmental consultants look at it and they verified that the air quality there, you know, was fine. Um, I think the board wants to move forward with, um, air conditioning all of our schools um, and, and believes that probably the best way to do that would be to discuss, um, proposing a bond for the community for next year. This is from, um, let's make sure I didn't skip anybody there. Jill Kozlowski, Buffalo Avenue, East Atlantic Beach. Our cub, current numbers are higher than they were last January during Delta peak. Why would we remove masks now while still high will lead to increased closures and children out sick. More disruption is not what our children need. Rental choice is not a reason to ignore public health. It follows the same logic as smoking being banned in public places. Your personal preference doesn't override the safety of others. We want normal, but if you look at case and hospitalization numbers, we are far from it. How will quarantine rules change if masks are optional, which I already addressed? Will students have to go back to six feet apart then per the CDC guidelines? Perhaps, yes. What long-term solutions is the district looking into? Um, clean air, open windows should be a permanent solution. Boston schools installing CO2 monitor, monitors with air purifiers? What steps are we taking beyond willing things back to normal and ignoring reality? Um, we, we have looked at, um, our air quality again to add to what I just said um, and have done many things over the past two years to improve air quality. We've looked, we've, um, improved ventilation systems in buildings that have mechanical ventilation. Um, and we've looked at other options for increasing ventilation in buildings. It, it predominantly at ease where, um, there is not mechanical ventilation, including installing fans, fans. Um, we looked at air purifiers. I addressed this at the last board meeting and we were told that they would not be effective in our classrooms. And then the final comment from, um, Ms. Kozlowski is please don't remove safety measures until, um, that will prolong the virus. Sorry, I think I skipped something there. Um, from Kim Greengus, Forty-Seven Boyd Street in Long Beach. Because the Supreme Court put in optional masks for the students of Long Beach School District, why are you not adhering to the Supreme Court? You are going against the law and committing a crime against students' rights. So the Supreme Court did not put in an optional mask mandate for our district. The Supreme Court objected to the way Governor Hochul in process, um, put a mask mandate in, in, in place for the state. In fact, in the ruling, the, the justice, um, noted that he understood the reasoning behind the, the, um, mandate. He just objected to how she did it on a procedural, um, level. It was not that the mask mandate was, um, a violation of students' rights. We were advised that we had legal purview to keep the mask mandate in place for today. And we did so, as I noted last night, because we, um, were fairly certain that a stay would be issued today and that the back and forth would be damaging for our students. And as I said earlier, we will, um, follow the state mask mandate when it is taken to its legal, um, conclusion either way. Um, there are just, oh, I just shut it, but there are a couple more, um, Google questions that came in tonight. If you will just give me two seconds, I'll pull it up again. Sorry about that. Too many screens open. Okay, this is from Angela Kozlowski, um, Sixty-One Kentucky Street, Long, Long Beach. Please continue the CDC guidelines, putting the cell, health and safety of our student, school and community first by continuing to mandate masks and reduce the spread of COVID nineteen. Thank you. Um, the next one is from Kimberly Kozlowski. It is of the utmost importance that we mitigate risk for our students, their families, extended families, um, teachers, staff and the community as a whole at this time. I request that our school continue following CDC guidelines, including the health and safety of our community first. From Kim Miller, Fifty-Six West Hudson Street. What information does our district mandate in IEP Direct that generates progress reports and IEPs? Um, Mrs. Miller had asked this question of me earlier in the week, um, and I did answer her. According to, um, our district, we put in session dates and, uh, notes that reflect the goals that are on a student's IEP, um, and progress towards those goals. The last one is from Allison Butler. Thank you for following the CDC guidelines and keeping our children masked and safe thus far. I support the decision to keep, continue to keep the health and safety of our children as a top priority. Please continue these practices beyond Friday. And that concludes the questions and comments from the public.
Thank you, Dr. Gallagher, for reading those comments and for answering them. Um, okay, I believe that now we can have a motion to adjourn. Um, Ms. Verona, motion second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your participation.
Have a good night. Good night. Thank you.
Good night.